Today is Monday, June 6th. I'd like to call a selectmen's meeting to order. Please rise for the pleasure.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first order of business is Rick Sinker?
Oh.
Talking about selling our...
Yes.
...home on properties.
I have a couple things just again, I think a little closer.
Absolutely.
You need to use the board, feel free.
I don't, I'm not sophisticated. Okay, so you've asked me to come here to talk about auctioning off your tax-acquired properties or other properties that you may have. I've been doing this for about 10 years now. About two years ago, I came to license an auction here also. Essentially what we do, and I've done probably 10 auctions, and what we do is you hand over to me your properties that you want to sell. Essentially what I like to see is at least half a million dollars in assessed value. Because it is a time-consuming process, and I'll tell you what we do.
I don't think we have that much.
Okay, well, if you have something close to it, you know, we'll talk. I'm doing one for Wakefield right now, there's also slightly under half a million. But one thing that you have going for you is you're close to my office, so that's less travel time for me. Essentially what I do is I take your properties, and with the assistance of your town administrator, I get copies of the certified mail notices that go out. If you have prior deeds, fine, tax collector's deeds. And we have a website, which is New Hampshire Tax Deed Auctions. And I just want to take one and pass them down, and there's one for you. Two, oh, you only get one.
Thank you.
And, you know, it's just a sample of the front page. This little picture on the front rotates to different properties that are for sale. And at the top of the front page, you can click where it says, "Next Auction, Wakefield, New Hampshire." And then anybody who is interested in a property can click and get the tax assessment card or the prior owner deed, or the location with a map pointing to where the property is, and et cetera. So they essentially have at their fingertips all the information that they would need. For those who don't have a, or are not on the Internet, we also prepare a bidder's packet. This is one that we did for City of Clermont. This is single-sided, they end up being double-sided, so it would be half as thick as this. But this essentially has all of the same information that's on the website, but for people who don't want to be on the website. We make those available at the town office. We put somebody in charge to sell them at 10 bucks apiece, just so that somebody doesn't come in. We made them for free at one point, and people would come in and grab like half a dozen or whatever. So 10 bucks if they want. It's a comprehensive document of all that you could possibly want to know about all of the properties. We also put an ad in the newspaper for one or two weeks. I put signage on each property, essentially two signs. One is specific to the date, time, place of the auction, as well as a property number. And then there's another sign that just has generic information about how to contact New Hampshire Tax Deed Auctions. Once we have started that process, we field all the telephone calls, and obviously conduct the auction itself, which we would hold at a, in-town here, at whatever building you tell me. It could be in here, it could be, you know, wherever we, you know, the townhouse might be a nice place to have it. We generally get between 30 and 40 registered bidders. We require a thousand dollar deposit from each bidder, just to keep out the so-called riffraff that might just want to bid and then walk out of the room. We usually take up backup bidders, too, because we've had situations where the primary bidder doesn't go through. And all this process, in essence, costs the town nothing, because the way I get paid, my firm gets paid, is to charge a 10 percent buyer's premium. Let's see, what else can I tell you? Oh, as far as your list, I don't know what your list of properties is, but if you have some properties that you've held on to, the rule of thumb is that people believe you can't sell a property unless you've held it for three years. That's not true. You can sell properties, if you've just acquired them, as long as you send out a letter to the former owner 90 days in advance of the auction, giving them the right to redeem. There is a new law that is going into effect July 2. Previously, if someone lost their property, you would send them a letter, they'd have to pay the 15 percent to get it back. The 15 percent is a penalty that every former owner pays if they lose the property. But they've now made it zero percent if the person has lost the property and it's their primary residence, which, you know, I think is good. They've also reduced the 15 percent penalty to 10 percent. So if there are, and there will be more instances where there are excess proceeds, now that they've reduced that 15 percent down to 10 percent, and excess proceeds are when we end up selling the property for more than the sum total of back taxes, the penalty, and incidental consequential expenses, in which instance, we also handle that at no cost to the town, because we get paid out of the excess proceeds, and that's by statute. So we have to file an interpleter complaint with the Superior Court, notice the mortgage holders, the former owners, whoever else has a lienhold interest in the property, and then we let the court fight it out. I'm usually more involved in that, trying to negotiate between the various parties to get it resolved, because the court doesn't really want to handle it by themselves, so that's it in a nutshell. When somebody successfully bids, they get a memorandum of sale, you know, that's just a sample. And here is just a copy, I only have one copy of proposed agreements. This is a generic type agreement that I use with all of the towns and cities I've represented. And, oh, one important thing is, we also obtain from the town the names and addresses of all the bidders to all of the properties, because those are the people who tend to bid a lot. You know, there's a lot of these properties that you get, are land, are landlocked pieces of property, or whatever. So we make sure that the bidders have actual notice of the time, date, and place of the auction. So what else do you need to know?
We do have one property that is, we've only had it for two years, so...
Okay. So that would automatically put your auction more than 90 days out.
Right.
And I would suggest, with the new law coming into effect July 2, that that would be the start date of the 90-day letter going out. So July, August, September, we're looking at having it in October, which isn't bad.
Okay.
I just prefer not to be ripping up signs or trying to jam signs in the ground like I was in Clermont, when the ground was frozen solid.
Do we have a minimum bid price on these properties?
I generally, I've never had a minimum bid price on that, because part of the reason that you're doing this is to get these properties back on the tax rolls.
Right.
So I think you get rid of your inventory all at one time, no minimum bid, that's a big draw for a lot of people, as opposed to having a minimum bid. And, you know, some of these properties, you're going to make your money back, some of them you're going to make more than your money back, and some of them you're going to sell for less than what the taxes are owed. But setting a minimum doesn't help you all that much, because if we go through the auction and you still own it, you're gonna still have to get rid of it someday, so then what does the minimum bid become?
Yeah.
So just get rid of everything. If you have other properties that you have acquired that buy other than tax deeds, we can sell them, too. We just designate that it's not a tax-acquired property, so, you know, big deal. Did that in Clermont with a couple of properties.
Yeah. Some of them might...
Have you seen a better time of year than others in this area to do auctions?
I haven't. The one we did in Clermont, I was a little bit concerned about, because it was in, I think the actual sale was in March, yeah, March 19 of this year. And I was thinking, eh, people are gonna, you know, put off snow. That was the highest-attended auction I'd ever seen. And they only had nine properties, and it went off great. I can't really say, you know, summer better is, you know, well, we'll know, because the one I'm doing in Wakefield is June 25. I don't really think it makes any difference, because we advertise the heck out of it, which is the key. And we also have an email list of probably 100 people on it now that are realtors, you know, statewide, just investors. And, you know, once we get the okay, we send out emails, which generally go out about 45 days before the actual date. And we get a lot of questions, a lot of input for every auction. So we've sort of got it down after, you know, so many trips around there.
Is it to the town's advantage to clean up the properties?
It depends. I did one in Hanover, where they just had one property, and it was a very valuable property, and it was a total disaster inside. So I recommended to them that they clean it up, because it was so bad, you couldn't even really walk through it. I mean, it was just disgusting. So they cleaned it up, and I think that helped. It would be a case-by-case basis, Lloyd. Sometimes, you know, people just leave a bunch of stuff out in the yard. I probably wouldn't, unless it's a hazard. The idea here is that you put as little money in as you can, get the biggest return that you can, so...
Yeah, with the two-year one, we thought that instead of cleaning it up, we would try and sell it as is. A lot of cans on the property, trash, basically.
Would be post-a-trial for...
Yeah.
Yeah, and that one I probably wouldn't bother.
Yeah, we prefer not to, if somebody...
Yeah, why spend the tax dollars upfront? You know, obviously, I'll be taking a look at all these properties. I do that personally, and first I go in, I, you know, I take pictures of all the properties, and I might be putting up the signs at the same time I take pictures, because if I can put the signs up and then take pictures of the signs on the property, people will know exactly what property they need to see. So it's a lot of work, you know, behind the scenes, the auctions, I generally hold them on a Saturday at 10 o'clock, and... I don't know where I was going with that, but that's generally what I do.
Well, people who work, and therefore attend, so that's great. All right, so we're gonna have to add up our properties. I don't know what it...
Well, if Karen just wants me, get me a list at some point...
Do you have the information? Oh, it was in the tax cards and things?
Yeah.
They should be right in front of us.
Karen and I used to live close to one another.
Yeah.
She said we sat my way.
Add these up while you're speaking, if you like. I'll just add them up?
Sure.
If that's helpful.
Okay, I think we have eight or so, last time I looked.
So that's pretty much due. So if you want to, I can, Karen can do this now or later, and...
Oh, well, let's try it and then take one. Do you want to take that with you?
Sure.
There we go.
You can take that one, the two-year one, which is...
Okay. Great, so...
The board is in agreement that we want to include the two-year, correct?
Yeah.
I do.
Yes.
So...
Sounds like a plan.
You can talk about it, and just let me know if you want to go forward, and then if you're interested, I'll prepare a contract and get it over to Karen for you to take a look at, and take it from there.
Okay, that's great.
If you have any questions, you know where to find me?
Absolutely.
All right, great.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good to see you, nice to meet you.
Good to see you again, Lloyd.
Always a pleasure, Carolyn.
Absolutely.
And good seeing you.
Thanks, thank you too.
We'll talk some more sometime. You're on the other end.
Ben Williams coming in at 9:30, all right. What?
Me.
Oh, just you? All right, you're up.
Ben, come on down.
Do whatever you want to do first.
All right, we have 34 building permits, 10 new homes, I've done 202 inspections. And as you noticed, the fire and parole has been done. And at the end of the month, I'm gonna seal it, as a separate period of time, you can seal it, it's only been done in the month, and I'll put the cabinets back within a month.
Great.
Lang Pond Road.
Wait, is it? I put a little note on there, too, about the time. So I think that's our 9:00 AM, if we continue to have a second Monday.
So, okay, so...
Oh, that is the...
If they decide, that's how I decide.
The 11th is the 4:00 meeting, but it's usually a guy, yeah, so I might have to swap it in at that issue. July 11th meeting is usually the second one of the months, it's usually in the morning, it's an issue to have in the afternoon.
Why do we, why do we need it in the afternoon?
Because that's the date of the bids.
Oh, we're gonna open the bids on that day, okay. Yeah, it's fine, okay.
4 o'clock's fine, yeah, no worries, otherwise...
Otherwise, you're gonna put it off two weeks, because you don't have enough there.
Yeah, or have the bids in before 9:00, so, but why not a 4 o'clock meeting? That makes sense.
All right, so this is the updated...
That's the updated, yes.
Now, there was a couple of emails back and forth about how counsel just review it.
That was probably the contract part.
That this card, okay.
Because the deadline, he already had it. Say, yeah, and they don't say anything.
Yeah, that's fine. You were both at the meeting?
Yes.
Friday?
Well, but one thing that we need to insert in this invitation is we're at the blank line down here, notice to proceed. Will be issued on or before, and a date.
Right.
I would suggest that 26th of July, on or before the 26th, that gives us...
That's the time you get to look at it and decide. That's about number, the date is...
Somebody else looking at this to decide?
I think the committee, the committee recommended that Norway Plains look at the bids.
They're just gonna look at the bids and then offer their expertise.
Yeah.
Okay.
So...
They are, they are hired employee to... We did the same thing for the fire station.
Fire station, yeah.
The reason I, yeah, but the reason I suggested 26th is then, you know, if we have a period on the 25th, and we, and we want to act on it at that point, then that gives us, and if we want to act on it before then, no worries either, we're just, we're just, you know, we're just telling the bidders that then, that the contract will be awarded by the 26th of July.
Okay.
So that would be my recommendation for a date.
That's fine. Okay. Is our cap being, or do you know? Melissa?
So you have just approved the bid itself, and then that will be advertised?
The invitation to bid.
The invitation to bid has, this will go to the paper today, I believe?
Yes, and then it'll go on the town website Thursday.
It's also on the website, did you say?
Not yet.
It will be, though?
It will.
Okay.
And the union leader.
Okay. All right. Anything else we have to do?
Do we need a motion?
For the date?
To accept it.
For the holding? Yeah, yeah, sure.
So moved, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Don't get, cut out at 2:30.
Okay. That, this committee has done a super job.
They have.
Yes, good job, okay, so we should send the contract itself to Rick?
Yeah.
Is that one here? You got it? Okay. Yeah, just have him take a look, yeah. Make sure we're all nice and legal.
Yeah.
Right, all right. All right, then, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Do we need to act on employing Norway Plains as the, as the interim firm?
That was part of my, I intended that to be part of my motion.
Oh.
We're accepting the recommendation of the Lang Pond Road.
Okay, well, we are accepting the invitation to bid along with Norway Plains.
And that's an estimate based on seven inspections, which maybe wants them to look at, fill amounts.
The biggest amount, yes, it'll be a little...
How much is?
It's right here. The estimate is 21.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So we'll redo the motion, including Norway Plains, to make it clear.
Yes.
Okay. Motion to approve the invitation to bid and hiring of Norway Plains overseas.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, good, thank you. Clay? Jim coming in today, Karen? I haven't spoken when I have to.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning, Clay.
Great, bye week. Bye bye week, happy birthday.
Is it mandatory?
My wife does the same thing.
Looks good.
The numbers for, the number for May, for specifics, is the first page.
Okay.
Obviously, everything's in red, because I haven't got to do the waste management bill yet. Once I get that, we'll, it's all enough. But we're starting to ramp up, obviously, the summertime operations. The weekends have been extremely busy. And we put out, we're gonna put out a paper shipment on Tuesday, we put out cardboard shipment on Tuesday, we put out a paper shipment three or four weeks ago. And we're almost coming up to another paper shipment, so that mixed paper, we're gonna be, we're gonna be trucking out a lot, so, since that changed. We also put container TVs out, and metal scrap. The metal scrap prices have gone up a little bit, not a whole lot, but everything is still Interesting, what I wanted to point out, the second page is the monthly wrap-up and the year-to-date totals. I did raise the alarm last, at the end of last year, and I thought it may have just been a spike, as far as construction debris goes.
Right.
It is not a spike. We are just getting hammered with construction debris. We put out, and just, if you look at the top two lines of the second page, in 2015, for solid waste, at this time, at the end of May of last year, we had 34 containers with 340 tons of MSW, that's out of the compacters. At this time, at this time this year, 2016, we have 33 containers with 340 tons. So as far as solid waste, it's spot-on, and it's been spot-on for the last four or five years. And actually, we decreased the containers, we're, you know, for whatever reason, we're one container less than we were last year. However, not true with construction debris. Last year at this time, which we also went over our budget last year in construction debris, at the, at the end of May, we had 21 containers for 134 tons. As of the end of May, we put out 36 containers with over 230 tons. So we're, we're...
It's not a trend, it's a trend.
Yeah, right. Well, things have picked up in the...
Well, I think, I think a lot of roofs are being done, and a lot of people are doing small additions, where maybe it's not economic for them to have a dumpster on-site, and so they have the contractors bring the material up to us, and maybe they save, you know, 50 percent on the disposal fees for...
I know at least three buildings that...
Came up to us.
I mean, I think one guy did six truckloads of...
Right. So now, we do, we do charge for the construction debris, so obviously, there's, there is some increase in, in the revenue taken in, but obviously, it's not nearly enough. So the reason I'm bringing this up is so we can pass along to the budget committee, so there's no surprises that that number is probably going to be exceeded dramatically.
We'll have to find...
And I'm, on all the other budget lines, I'm trying to do the best that I can to keep it at or well below, to make up for as much as we can on the other budget lines. And if there's, if there's any, if it's something that we wanted to purchase that, you know, we can do without, we won't purchase.
Yeah, we're gonna have to be very...
And I'm doing the same thing, I'm doing the same thing with the, with the labor hours, too. When, when somebody has a vacation day or a quick day, and I bring the premium in, I'm only bringing the premium in for about half the time.
Excuse me, sorry.
So that's for two, two reasons, but one is to, you know, keep them, the labor costs And if there's alternate, if there's alternate ways to get rid of stuff, I'm continually searching to get the best prices we can for the material that we're getting rid of or Now, just, I'll keep you updated every, every month on a monthly basis, you know, hopefully, and maybe it'll slow down a little bit, but...
Probably not.
The next item was, there had been some message traffic back and forth about the possibility of doing compost bins. I am, I personally am recommending against us doing that. We have the recycling bins, and I'd like to keep it just at that. You have to buy a certain number of these things to make a price break point, then we become a storage area for that material, and we're also becoming a retail store, without the benefits of a retail store. Somebody buys a rain barrel, which happened last year, $60, it wasn't last year, it was a couple years ago, $60 for the rain barrel, which you can get, you know, the same, better quality down at Brad's or at Lowe's or Home Depot, and it cracks. You know, what do we do? Do we, you know, we don't have the money to give them back, or, you know, we end up, we end up having to try to follow retail rules, which, that's not... we end up having to try to follow retail rules, which, that's not really where we belong to be. So, my recommendation is, is we leave it just at the recycling bins. If the recycling committee would want to hop on doing something like that, and, you know, having them someplace and selling them, that's, that's up to them. But for us, as transfer station employees, I think we should do that business.
We had done it once before.
Yeah, if, we, we did it, we ended up having this for years.
Took a long time, took a long time.
The recycling bins go a little bit better.
Yeah.
And I would recommend keeping those. If it had something on it like, you know, Tuft and Grew Recycles, or like some towns have on their bins, people are very proud of those bins, you know. And it does have the appearance of beautiful, but the other stuff, the compost bins and, and kitchen container and all the other stuff, it's just, it's just generic. But that's what I would recommend.
Okay.
We are having a little bit of a problem with the, the oldest baler, the light blue one, for those that have been up there. That baler has been there since the transfer station started, I guess, so it's at least seventeen, eighteen years old, and I don't know if it was new when it was bought, or if it was a used one, but it's, it's seen better days. We're having some problems with the electronics due to that, or the horse, the ten horsepower motor. I have a feeling it's in the buttons and the electronic relays, but it's disconnecting, which, then we have to shut the power all the way off, and if you can imagine, every time you wanna press the button to get it to come down, it pops off, and then it's a three or four minute job, you have to turn the mast drop, you have to turn the main valves off, you have to open up the, the power box, and you gotta reset, and then get it all closed and come back, and it's not gonna work in summer. It's just not gonna be very productive.
That's the one for the cardboard, right?
That's the one for the cardboard. I have, like recycling, Todd has been very good with us and very responsive, and I have him working on the issue, so we'll try to identify exactly what it is and hopefully get it fixed. That baler is really coming up due for a rebuild anyway. All the plastic, there's plastic guides that are, on the plunger that comes down, there's plastic guides on the end, and they've been, they've been shot since I came on board six years ago, so. We, we really need to look at doing a partial rebuild of the ventilation machine.
Well, it's a strenuous piece of equipment.
It does a lot of work. Island Day, just wanted to make, get it out there and let everybody know. Still planning on doing Island Day on the third Saturday in July, which is, I believe, the fifteenth or sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth, from nine to noon, pure nineteen. And I'll get the same, try to get the same deal with Waste Management, where they provide the container for yard. And I've already had a couple of people call and ask about it, so. And that's about it. Yes, sir.
I'm gonna hit you cold.
Uh-oh.
Three out of the last four trips up to the transfer station, I've noticed the mall.
Uh, Tuft and Grew Mall?
Yeah, we have a couple of people that are hanging around, parked in the way. On two instances, your people had to go over, and guys were wandering around out back, and one was sleeping on the hood of his car. My compliments to your staff. You know, I, I, I understand why we have it, and I support it, but if I'm, I don't mean to be catching you unawares, but do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, absolutely, it, it's a, it's a double-edged sword. There are a lot of people in this town that come up to the transfer station solely because of the swap shop. That's a good thing. It's a good thing if we can reuse something rather than throw it away. The other hand of the, the other side of the sword is, it's a convenient place, if it's not manned all the time, to dump stuff that you shouldn't be dumping. Electronics, TVs, things that would normally cost money to get rid of, you know, people aren't, you know, they, they see how busy we are, and if we're, if we're roaming around doing other jobs, they'll, they'll wait and dump off illegal items. So we're constantly having to inspect it, pick up the items. Taking where they are, we lost the revenue for getting rid of that item, you know, it's not a whole lot of money, it's just more of a pain than it is anything else, that, that somebody would do that, number one, and number two, we, we have to clean it up. The other part of the equation is that some people, some people just come in and there's stuff on the shelves, or there's stuff in bags, they tear it all out, they don't, they don't put anything back. And so we constantly have to go in and, and clean it up and, and get rid of the stuff. Those are both, those areas of the double-edged sword of management by us, and we've been doing it for years. The, the last part is the type of person that comes up there sometimes. Where other facilities have had problems in Knockemwood, we have not. Conley had to shut theirs down, because they had, you know, consignment people and yard sale people hawking the customers as they came in, or the residents as they tried to dump stuff off. They were getting into fistfights, trying to get stuff out of people's cars if wanted to put it in the swap shop, to take it for themselves, and they've had to call the police numerous times, so they shut it down. We aren't at that stage, and, and, you know, we have a couple people that take a lot of stuff, and it's very obvious they're, they're, it's not for their personal use. Then again, you know, we're not here to subsidize anybody else's living, but at the same time, if it's not being thrown away.
Right.
Yes.
You know, so, so again, we teeter on, you know, if you ask our opinions, we would, you know, we would just as soon, as soon as see the place close down. But, my opinion from supervising the station and running it, it's a draw. It's a draw to the station and to also keep stuff out of the waste room, so, to me, I would definitely keep it up and follow the hours, we just try to be very tactful about people, and there's only, it's only a handful, it's only one or two, and there's one, and I know exactly who you're talking about.
You understand, it's not a criticism.
Right, right. Yeah, and it's just, we have to be tactful in how we deal with it.
And your, and the two instances I observed, they worked, so pass that on to them.
They don't bother the rest of the residents.
Maybe, some people from the recycle committee could do some volunteering down there.
That could, we could try to do that, too.
I, I know that some towns do man their swap shop.
Almost all of them.
And, obviously, Manning with volunteers as opposed to paid staff makes a lot of sense.
Right.
So maybe that's a, that is a, a task that the recycling committee would.
Take on.
Right.
Embrace.
If they don't themselves find volunteers, who might wanna spend a few hours down there.
And that also makes it a little bit more convenient, if somebody wants to drop, let's say, a chair off, a stuffed chair, that's in marginal condition, it would normally cost five dollars to get rid of that chair, construction debris. If we have them put it over at the swap shop, it puts us in a little bit of a difficult situation, because if a chair goes there and it doesn't go, and we have to throw it away, we eat the cost.
Yeah.
Okay, and, and, so, usually, what I've done in those kind of situations is, you know, we'll, we'll take the money as it would be to throw it away, and if it goes, when the guy comes back the next week, then we'll give him the money back if somebody takes it, if not, we put it in our swap shop.
That makes a lot of sense.
But, that's, again, that's, you know, you gotta manage that, you gotta supervise it, you know, it's just, it's another step that's not really part of our main job. I think the recycling committee would be a good place to start, and see if we could get that.
Well, thank you, thank you for your understanding.
The other, the other part which we have never talked about, maybe the first year I was here, is that there are some people that think that anything in the transfer station is public property. And I.e., when, when you get down by the scrap metal pile, there's people who wanna pick, and go through and take stuff out of the scrap metal pile. Understand. Liability-wise, not a very smart thing to do, and we've, we've deterred it. There are towns that actually have voted to allow it to occur, Meredith being one, at least from what I've heard, that they have, they make picking in the scrap metal pile a legal thing to do. For us, I've had individuals send their kids into the scrap metal pile to pick up something, you know, and I've had to, to run them out, and I do it all the time, is, and it's a liability issue.
And they're climbing up on it?
Yeah, climbing up on a stove or something like that to try to get a barbecue grill wheel that's on the top, you know, it's, anything can happen, and this is how bizarre it gets, okay? I had a conversation with the father of two, two boys that were up on top of the cement blocks that I had to get out in the way for the metal pile, they didn't have shoes on. And I, and, you know, I said, it's a liability issue, you know, it's a liability issue for the town, we can't have people crawling around in the metal. Oh, he says, I have insurance. No. It doesn't work that way, it doesn't work that way, you know, the kid falls and a steel pipe goes through his chest and through his heart, and the next thing you know, you know, we're responsible, the town's responsible. And so, I, in my opinion, we shouldn't have it. The way I've run it, so far, has been very successful in most of the cases, is if somebody sees something they want, if they come up and ask, you know, I'll send Rob down or Barry down with the backhoe, pull out with the backhoe, and, and, and we'll get it, and we'll get it for them, 'cause again, if it can be reused, I'd rather see it reused than thrown away. But I'd let us do it, and, and not them, so I'd like to kinda keep it at that.
Oh, yeah.
Level, makes sense.
Definitely.
Would, would some additional signage help?
No, signs, you know, my experience with signs is, is we are signed out, you know? The people that do it right are the only ones that are gonna read the sign. The ones that are gonna do it wrong, couldn't care less, you could have fifteen signs up there, you could have a wrought iron steel gate around, and they're gonna climb over the gate, and, you know, walk past each sign and say, oh, I didn't know it was, you know, we couldn't do this, so.
Yeah.
The signs, more or less, give us protection from liability, 'cause we posted a sign. But that's not total protection, so. You know, we, we, we can look at, you know, maybe putting something up, and do not, do not enter the, the other thing we could do is, is put some kind of a barrier around.
I think having a sign gives us a little bit more protection.
Yeah.
Regardless of whether they read it or not, it's there, so.
Well, we're good to get that.
Yeah.
Let the, go for the terminology on the sign to make sure it meets all the requirements.
Yeah. Anything else?
That's it.
Have a good day.
Very good.
Happy June.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clay.
Yep.
Happy twenty-ninth birthday.
Kristy?
I'll list first.
Happy June.
Solstice. I don't have statistics with me today because I'm still missing database info, it doesn't get here until today, so, but I did notice when I was putting some other numbers together that our volunteer hours were up for, for May, and that's nice. And while I'm on that subject, I should mention publicly that we are looking for volunteers to help the book and bake sale. We'll be moving those books on June twenty-first, the Deerborns garage and into the school, and we'll need help with that, some of which we already have, but we can always use more. There is also setting up the sale and working the sale, which will be July eighth and ninth, I mean, yeah, eighth and ninth this year, Friday and Saturday. And we need a chairperson for the bake sale, and all of these are temporary and short-term volunteer jobs, so no one's signing on for life, which I know.
Only if they want to.
Well, true, yes, we'll, we'll take lifers, you know, we won't say no. We also have, now, tickets are on sale for the Friends Garden Tour, which will be July seventh, and also for the raffle, which is going on now at the library, both of those will benefit the building fund. And work is proceeding on the auction, which is scheduled for August twelfth at the Tadaro Center, and we are now having sponsorships and donor donations come in, which is also very gratifying. Story Hour continues through June sixteenth, then we take a summer hiatus until just after Labor Day, and, but we do, we don't stop programming for kids. We will have in July, every Friday morning, there is something special going on at the library. I bought, I bought a car bookmark, so everyone can take a look. Sculpture workshop, the Brain Circus workshop, Wildlife Encounters, and they're bringing the python back this year. I think we're also gonna have an Arctic fox, which will be interesting. A magic show, and then the Children's Museum is coming with a workshop where the kids make their own working light-up circuits.
Oh, wonderful.
So, lots of inventive things going on this summer. We'll also show movies at eleven and twelve for families on every rainy day. Secret Garden Tour is on here in Book and Bake Sale, the auction, and the Friends Annual Meeting, and on the other side are just the ongoing programs that we have. The summer reading program this summer will benefit the Lakes Region Human Society. The Saturday Writers Group goes on weekly, Cafe Socrates, which just started last week, will be Wednesday mornings at eleven, and they actually had.
That's interesting.
Had seven people last week, the very first one, which really, a couple of them I had never seen before, so that's really very cool. And the History Book Club is an ongoing thing, too. I think that's really, oh, no, one more thing. A couple of months ago, you asked us to look into transportation in Carroll County, and I meant to bring you this last month and forgot, but it turns out that when we looked into it, there is information there, and it's all on the top.
Thank you.
So if you need more, please just let me know. And if you don't have questions.
Put me down for the sponsorship for the kids reading.
Oh, okay, great, thanks very much. All they want is pedigree dog food this time.
It's easy.
It is, yeah.
Canned and dry?
Uh, no, canned.
Canned.
Yep, very short list. I'll go with sponsor letter, and thank you very much.
Okay, great, thanks. Kim?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir. Happy June.
Yes. Since the last time we met, we finished the removal of the rocks on Sawdome Road and replaced the metal culvert in preparation for paving, and the last third of Sawdome Road was then shimmed and paved, completing Sawdome Road paving, so that's, Sawdome Road's completely done now. The second half of Union Wharf was reclaimed, back to gravel, and then repaved with a base coat, finishing the base coat on all of Union Wharf, so next year, it's ready for the top road, and that will be all done. The grading of the dirt roads has been completed for the springtime round, and the swim lines were installed at Nineteen Mile Beach as well as Melton Beach, and we're on the schedule for the line striping for all the roads, which will be the yalls and the barbed lines. Roughly two weeks, it's weather pending every time we get rain, every day we get a rain day, it puts us out another day. Basically, that's how it works, so. Roughly two weeks out. That's about it.
We have the schedule at additional ride around, the two of us, to go over some of the other issues that Lloyd had.
Yeah.
Did you have any?
Bill, let you. Yeah.
Specific, yeah. So we'll have the schedule at some time.
Okay. That'll work, Steve.
Not today.
Not today, yeah. All right, I'll have Karen contact you. Any day better for you than?
Not off the top of my head.
Okay.
She'll be fine.
Karen will set something up for us. Anything on the red-listed bridges?
I basically missed one call from her. I've called her back three times since. Somehow, we're just having a little trouble connecting. So we're going to try to do, I'm going to try email and see if that works better. I've left her, you know, my whole explanation of what we're looking for three times. I don't, you know.
Right.
And I don't know. She's, she didn't. Right, and her message back had no response to any of my questions, so.
Yeah, that could eliminate a lot of phone calls.
Yeah.
This is a picture of the hole at.
Okay, that's on.
The Melon River Bridge.
Sodom Road Bridge, okay.
Sodom Road Bridge?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on Sodom.
And my printer was running out of ink, so that red wash is not artistic interpretation.
Okay, yep, we can take a look at that. I don't think it's structural with the road or the bridge.
And anything on the issues that David led, wrote your attention?
We haven't got to that yet. I have been in communication with him. And that may happen this week. Since the water slowed down from last night's rain.
Lot of rain.
Yeah, yeah, all the streams are flowing pretty good right now. Yep, we'll get that done in the next week or so. Here, we should get it cleaned up.
The state did some work up there?
Yeah, they did. They, they, they put the riprap in down the sides of the road, which slows the water down. I don't know how much changed things down there because there is a certain amount of sand that just comes through the river. It's just, I think it's always been that way, so.
Yeah, yeah.
On that issue of Lane, Lane Zan, at my tech meeting Wednesday, we went to Hebron. And they have even more issues similar to what we have at Lane Zan, where we have the ditches on Ledge Hill Road. And we had a presentation by Boyd Smith, Executive Director of Newfoundland Lake Region Association, and what to do about water runoff and control measures. He was familiar with Lane Pond Road, you know, the erosion into the beach or whatnot. He works with six towns over there, and they've been very responsive to exactly the issues you deal with with ditches and culverts and, and all of that, had no problem coming over, having a conversation. What's interesting is things that you've told me and the courses you've taken were the same things that were reiterated by him, so I think you're on the, on the right path. The second thing is that the Lakes Region Planning is starting a program that will inventory our roads, our culverts, our ditch basins, our ditches, our runoff. And I mean, there are like twenty-nine variables for a culvert. You understand this, and I've had a conversation with you about headers. And I look at Lane, Lane Zan, for example, the water comes down and goes to a right angle, correct?
Oh, yeah.
In retrospect, that's why you put in, you try to put culverts in at an angle across the road. The other reason is that so trucks aren't on the entire culvert at once. And when I, we had a conversation about it, he said the same thing that you did. It's designed to collect sediment. It's a rain garden. It does exactly what it, what it's supposed to be designed for, but was put in, although no implanted for that. What's interesting is Lakes Region Planning is doing Guilford and Laconia. They can put Tuftonboro on the list, and it's similar to the other things they do for us. Is there's a grant available. We only pay twenty-five percent. Same thing happens, you know, when we want traffic monitors or whatnot. I think we pay fifty dollars and they absorb the rest. I will get together with you and.
That sounds great.
And that is for Budget Committee, for CIP, and for Town Meeting. Those are the experts that know about culverts and the right size and all that. Okay.
Melissa, I just have a question. The grant is for the study.
I'll give you a copy. Lakes Region Planning is starting up a program that will inventory our roads for us. It includes but is not limited to culvert ditches, runoff situations. The funding costs the town twenty-five percent. Guilford and Laconia are being mapped currently. We can obtain the cost and time and money for a fiscal year 2017 budget item. Lakes Region Planning Commission would be glad to make a presentation to the road agent and the board of Sodom.
Good. It'll be interesting.
On the bridges, I think they're working on something on the basin because there is a road town on the next one to her. I don't know who put it there.
Okay.
It wasn't, probably just a cross. Bill, last week, I think, before the bake sale.
So maybe they're finally coming up to.
She's not answering you because she doesn't have the answer. But you've got something going on, maybe.
What else is supposed to be?
I got a couple of questions. On the road striping, it seems to me that the, that the road striping the state does lasts longer than what we've used. My guess is if that's true, it's because they use a different grade of paint. You know anything about that?
We do have several options when it comes to that. And basically, what we came up with, all the towns usually come up with the middle of the road, figuring that that's, we're kind of getting the best length of the buck out of the middle of the road. So that's what we're doing. Everybody else is doing it. There's a reason for it. We've never got the, you know, the most expensive one because it's almost double the cost. I don't, I don't think we're going to get double the life out of it, so. And the state does it every year, the same as we do, so. I think there's sufficient, the middle of the run, the middle of the road is probably sufficient for what we're.
There's nine thousand dollars in your budget. That's enough to do all the roads. Because it's three lines per road, isn't it?
It is, yep. Yeah, two separate trips up and down painting.
Next question. Near the foot of Sodom Road, just after you turn on and start heading up, there are a couple of places where we've got guardrails.
Yes.
And those guardrails look pretty sad to me. I don't know if they're structurally deteriorated or just banged up a little bit. And so do we have a program? Will we go in and replace those or verify that they're okay?
I did notice that, too. Structurally, I think they're okay, but they do look cosmetically a little beat up. And that is something we can probably take care of. We used to use a company, I think it was EBI or something like that. Unfortunately, the gentleman that owned it passed away last summer. We haven't gotten in contact with any, anybody new yet that can help us with that, but we will. But yeah, he had been doing it for many years, so. It's unfortunate that he passed away at an early age, but.
Yeah, that hurt us, I believe. Those driveways up on Ledge Hill we looked at on the ride around, I know you'd been in contact with the owners. Have those been corrected or is it?
They, they haven't been corrected, but we have, I've met with one of them and discussed it. And I'll follow up on that this week to see when the start time is for that as well.
Okay.
Yep. Trying to give them a little bit of a chance.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no.
It's busy season for everybody.
Sure.
Has the board made any decisions on Ecomia?
No.
No, I think we're a long ways away from that.
Yeah, we're not doing anything, deciding anything until September, the earliest I would think.
A citizen reported to me that some branches have fallen on the roof of the old tractor shed. Can you and your crew take, take those branches off?
We'll take a look. I'm sure we can.
I mean, is it in your budget? Is it in your view? I don't, I don't think that it's punctured the roof, but.
Yeah, we'll get a ladder and take a look at it.
Okay. I noticed that there's two driveway aprons, one at the dump and one at the Piper House. As people pull out, they have dug little holes there like that. I should have asked you while there was paving going on, is that something next year in the budget that the apron could be widened out?
I'm sure it is.
Sure.
If you could put it on your list.
Yep. I think so, it's Piper House.
You think it's sixty feet wide and people still drive up the edge?
Yeah, I was going to say, yeah, probably won't keep.
Maybe put a delineator there.
That would help, I'm sure.
You know, if it's cars prohibitive. And again, that's, no one's complained to me. It's just an observation. Okay. Is this for me?
You can have it, please. Anything else for Jim?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt, take your now.
I wanted to thank you. I spoke to Bill last week and expressed my thanks, but I wanted to say to you as a board that I thank you for, for hearing me on the ninth. And you clearly have taken some actions. And I wanted to follow up on, on that because I had asked you to state whether the board had the authority over the cemeteries. And I understand you discussed that at the May thirteenth meeting, but I wasn't there. And there's no video. So I don't know what you discussed because there's no record. Does the board have?
The cemetery trustees have full authority over the cemeteries, but it has been town procedure and policy for a long, long time that the selectmen provided certain duties at the town office as far as selling plots and things like that. We have no problem turning over those responsibilities to the cemetery trustees as it is their responsibility. And that would make a clear delineation of responsibility and duties. So all of what we currently do will be given to the cemetery trustees.
And I wanted to, I wanted to say that the editorial in the Granite State News a few weeks ago completely misrepresented my motives for attending meetings and for speaking up.
That's something that you should take up with the Granite State News.
Well, I have asked them to retract the false information that was in the May twelfth edition. And the editor has refused what Alyssa wrote was false, and she knew it was false, and she should retract it.
You talked to Alyssa about that. That's not our responsibility. It's between you and the paper and, and the reporter.
Why did you, I know that you're not required by law to send out an email notice, but it is your customary habit. And you didn't send out one for May thirteenth, was that just because it was an impromptu meeting and you forgot or?
The meeting was properly noticed.
So you decided not to send out an email?
The meeting was properly noticed.
So you decided not to send out an email? Because as a result of not sending out an email, even though legally you meant the letter of the law, nobody attended the meeting. So I understand that you meant the letter of the law, but as a result, no one be attended and then. That's all.
Okay. Thank you.
I hope that in the future, you will continue to provide the courtesy, which I understand is a courtesy of the email. That is not required by law. It is a a good thing that you have done for other meetings, so. Just to reiterate, I do not attend the meetings in order to try to find a little excuse to to one of you or anything like that. I happen to have a schedule where I'm able to attend the meetings. I have as much interest as any other resident in town and what goes on in town. And as I stated on May ninth, I do respect your experience and but I do want to ask you about this new contract that you signed with Corey because the document from 2010, which is here, as you can see, is three pages, and there are terms and conditions that protect the town. The reason I brought it up was was because I was concerned that without a signed contract, that the town would be liable in the event, God forbid, that Corey were injured on the job or that some other person was injured as a result of work that he had done. And this document, which if it had been signed, would have protected the town, clearly lays out what would happen. This new contract, which you signed last week, has no terms and conditions. So I'd like to ask what is going to happen. And again, obviously, I hope that Corey wouldn't be hurt, but it is a possibility. And that's why, you know, Clay talking about liability issues, it's a concern. So I just was wondering if if you have any contingency in case there is a liability issue. And if, if not, would you consider amending this contract to add contingencies, terms and conditions? Because I fear that the town would still be liable because this is this is an invoice that has the word "contract" on it and some signatures. And it's a not really a contract, so. My issue from the beginning was, when it came to the contract, was that the town would be liable. And if Corey were injured, it's not even necessary that Sarah. And if Corey were injured, it's not even necessary that Sarah Lee, he who would sue the town, if he has insurance, his insurance company might pay out the claim and then the insurance company would sue the town. So I'm not impugning Corey or saying that he would be litigious or anything like that. So would you please consider, and you don't have to consider it today, obviously, but would you consider amending this new contract to add terms and conditions that would cover the town?
Okay, thank you.
I know you're going on vacation, I hope that you have a wonderful time.
Thank you.
And...
We'll have some things to talk about when I get back.
And once more, thank you, you are the selectman, you have a lot on your plate, I understand that and and I do respect that.
Okay.
Thanks, Max.
Have a good June.
I have a question.
Yes.
At the meeting that Max did not attend, you referred to the implied contract you had with Corey?
Mm-hmm.
Because it was a longstanding contract and you mentioned that nothing changed. That his price has changed and all that. Do you consider it false for me to report that you had an ongoing contract?
No, because we did. You know, he originally signed the contract with the town and it was an agreement to continue with that through the years. We did not need to sign a contract every year because we weren't going out to bid. We were happy with his work and we wanted to keep him working for the town, so you're not going to find a, a new signed contract because we already had one with him.
Oh, okay.
An agreement, I think we can make verbal agreements that this is an ongoing contract.
Just, I, I do think it's, it's obviously your prerogative if you wanted a verbal contract agreement. The only reason that I asked about it is because you said that it was a signed contract and so I just asked to see the signed contract, which wasn't signed, and I gave it to you.
Which signed contract are you talking about?
There is no, was no signed contract.
There is a signed contract, it is.
As of last week.
The town has a contract with him, he signed our contract back in, I don't know what date that was.
That was 2010.
2010.
That document is, is not signed.
He signed it.
It's not signed. I have it right here, it's not signed. I gave it to Alyssa on the ninth.
Well, we'll let us, we'll look into it.
And it's not signed and you described it as signed.
Madam Chairman, point of order.
Yes.
Yes, I apologize, I apologize.
Can we move on to the next item?
Yes, we can.
Thank you for everyone's cooperation.
I apologize.
I just have one more comment. At that meeting...
Excuse me, Madam Chairman, if she has a question about what's to go in the minutes, I have no problem, but I'm not looking to exacerbate a issue that two individuals have. I'm, I'm friends with both of them and I don't want to take sides.
It has nothing to do with sides, boy. You also explained at that meeting that it was the town's contract, therefore you did not need to write out signatures on your own contract.
All right, signature file. First thing we have here is a temporary mobile home certificate of occupancy for Schill on Mountain Road. Motion to approve resigning.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have our letter to Camp Bell Matt. Signed, ready to go out, thanking them for the event they put on for the employees and volunteers. We have a yield tax levy for Brennan. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
What's the amount for?
So he hasn't paid for his logging, right? Okay, Madam Chairman.
We have also signed the appointment for Sue Wingate for the ad committee that we approved at our last meeting. And then we have appointments for planning board, three members of the planning board, Tony Triolo, Jack Parsons, and Matthew Young. After reapportment, motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then we have all of the members of the Hurrah Lake Watershed Study Committee, Ben Legg, Steve Wingate, Larry Gill, John Wapola, Jeff Moody, Dusty Davies, and they, Free Drake, and Gene Kelly. All of them to expire June 2017, motion to approve.
So moved.
Second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Slutnam's update. We have a draft copy of the audit for 2015 that we should formally approve so that the auditors can give us our final copy. So I'd like the motion to approve the audit.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We also got a request from Diane to make a decision on some types of pay that we pay some of our employees as far as whether or not it's going to be considered base pay or whatever any other category is.
I have a copy of that, can I read it?
Yeah, I thought I had a copy, I don't have it here.
The New Hampshire Legislature's made some changes to employers' retirement pension by categorizing between what is considered base pay and not base pay. Some types of, some types of compensation not classified is left up to the employer to decide whether the compensation was base pay or not base pay, such as on-call, lump sum, holiday, and payment in lieu of health insurance. The selectmen need to decide whether those unclassified compensation types will be part of an employee's base pay or what they call compensation over base.
Yes, so we have on-call, we have holiday, which is the lump sum at the end of the year, and then we have payment in lieu of health insurance. So have you had a chance to look at this? And any thoughts on it?
I have some thoughts and I actually went to some of our employees where they're in the retirement system. One thought is, in some towns, all three of these are figured into their retirement because it builds their retirement. However, there are other towns that lump sum, holiday pay, and on-call pay are work product related and are included in the retirement system. Payment in lieu of health insurance is strictly a benefit and...
And that is my feeling on it?
I have no problem making a decision, but I have also no problem with if it's okay for Karen just to take a poll of the employees, it's them. Sometimes, I worked in a town where the employees that we want everything possible to add to our retirement, so I'm, I'm kind of flexible. But I, I agree with Carol in that two are, are one thing, one's another, but it's not cast in stone.
I think it makes sense to at least get the sense from the people that are involved as to, you know, what their feeling is.
Okay.
It doesn't change the, it doesn't change the budget or anything like that, it's just a personal decision, right?
It will change the budget because we'll have an extra amount that we'll be paying in retirement funds for.
Okay.
However, it is, they're getting paid for work.
Yes.
And I feel that should be subject to retirement. The, in lieu of health insurance, as you said, is a benefit.
Yes, right.
That I don't see.
Again, I'm flexible.
If, if you want to ask the employees?
As I, when I asked the question, my contact, I said, well, can one department do it one way and another department another, and they said, no, it has to be a town policy. Which, which I understand that, so.
Right, okay.
It does mean that there's more out of pocket for them, so.
Yeah.
Sure, I don't have any problem. We'll decide that then on the 20th, one minute.
Sure, sure.
Okay, very good. Budget Committee had their first meeting on the 24th. Carla is chair again this year. Steve is vice chair again. And Helen continues to be the rep to the CIP. John Libby was the new member and I'm sure his head was spinning a little bit. We have, one, two, three, six properties here that we have not, well, five out of the six. We have not heard from anybody about our potential tax deed in these properties. So I suggest that at our meeting on the 20th, we vote deed these, at least three out of these properties. One is, North Country, I never recommend for us to take those properties. They have another two weeks, but they have not responded at all, except for one person, which I don't understand. So we might have more properties to sell in October. Parks and Rec had their meeting on Thursday. They ordered grills for the beach in the park, there's one grill for each there to be installed. We're going to buy a bench for the butterfly garden in memory of Reggie Amazin.
That would be nice.
Yes. So that'll be it at the school.
Is it going to be an Indian bench? He was big into Indians.
No, probably not.
No, he was, yeah, he was a nice one.
Yeah, so everybody thought that was a really great idea. And then we are currently working with only three lifeguards, so the schedules of the lifeguard will only be on Saturdays and Sundays so that we can provide coverage for those days. The rest of the week, there are swim instructors and other people there at the beach, so we'll accommodate it that way. And the kickoff is the 25th. And if, sure, everybody here got a tax bill? Maybe not. But the well water testing is taking place again this year, thanks to the Conservation Commission, on Sunday, July 24th. That's when the test kits will be collected. The kits will be distributed the week of July 18th to 22nd. And the 23rd, set at the 23rd, so excellent. And then, because a couple of years now, every time we ask the planning board about selling properties, oh, there's my information. They say we should do a voluntary merger on two properties. So I pulled off the application for the merger of 43250 and 4322. 250 is the townhouse. 22 is the property that has the road going down the back, so it just makes sense that these do get merged. So that's as far as I've got with the...
You need a motion?
Application, yes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, just kind of it up.
Yep. There was no information on, on the jeans, on our record cards here. Maybe Jack could bring it to the planning, oh, no, your planning board, there you go.
This is complicated, isn't it?
Maybe we don't... Maybe because we're the town, we wouldn't need it.
Whatever the procedure is, we got to follow it.
Exactly, exactly, we'll just have to do a little search.
All right.
That's all I have. Who's next?
Why? Couple of things I wanted to touch on. When we had the employee and volunteer event on Camp Belnam, Seth offered to make available trail construction and trail maintenance crews during the summertime, which is when they have campers there. And it occurs to me that the center of Cow Island, which is owned by the town, might be a a good place to have trail maintenance work done by these campers. But in order to do that, I think we need to take a tour and identify specifically what, you know, what's there, understand what's there, and come up with a list of projects for them to work on. And so we ought to schedule before the end of June, a trip to Cow Island. And hopefully have somebody along that's knowledgeable about what the conditions are in the interior, and preferably have Seth attend with us so we can kind of walk through it.
That's a good idea.
Has the rec committee been involved in any projects out there, like the beach?
So does it make sense to try and set a date?
Okay, let me try.
I mean, I don't have a particular date in mind, other than Mondays and Fridays work better for me.
So Mondays and Fridays work well for me, I'm flexible. The advantage on a Friday is I'm into sign checks anyway, so.
I prefer Monday, actually.
I'm, I'm flexible.
Yeah.
Yep, all right. Well, we have two more Mondays in June, the 20th and the 27th. Both days we have afternoon meetings. Do we want a target going out on the morning of the 20th?
Sure. The 27th as a backup?
Yep.
Okay.
Rain day?
Fire boat, or do you have a boat?
I, I have a boat that I'm not sure how suitable it is for marrying up out there. Rumor has it that somebody has a pontoon boat available that might.
Oh, is that happening?
Let me work on that.
Okay, great.
To be honest.
Yes, right, so we'll try and do that on the 20th. You mentioned the water, well water testing, and I just wanted to mention back, this is about middle of May, state DES had a conference call with on well water testing initiatives and programs, and I, I sat in on the call, and there was, it was very favorably mentioned, the program that we've been running, this is now, I think, the fifth year, we're doing it here in Tufton Row, with the approach that we take, the participation rate has been particularly strong in this town, and I think that's a tribute to the Conservation Commission and the effort that they put in, in making it happen.
Yeah, tremendous effort.
And the state now has available a resource that I believe came online last fall, and I apologize, I don't have the website address in front of me, but for those who get their well water tested, once they get the test results back, and go on to this, to this website.
I think it's on our website.
And it, and it provides some guidance on what the next step is. Here's my results, what does it mean? You know, should I be concerned, and if I'm, if I'm to be concerned, what do I do next? And so it sounds to me like that's a significant enhancement in, in the whole issue dealing with with water issues. So my, my thanks to the Conservation Commission for getting this whole thing started, actually, Steve Wingate is the, he's the ring leader on that back five years ago, and, and keeping it going. And I look forward to another successful well water testing year.
Yeah, we do encourage everybody to do that. At least every couple of years, anyway.
The Islanders Association is having their annual meeting on the 9th, the 9th of July. It's always the second Saturday in July.
Is it?
Yeah.
Last year, we missed it.
Yeah.
Didn't tell us, we couldn't even get the boat.
Yeah, I put a query out to Ellen.
Oh, good, because I spoke to Dave, he called me at the office, I said, you haven't heard about the meeting? He says, oh, all right, get Ellen on.
They hold it in the, whatever that house is, out on Ragged Island. And I've agreed to give them an update on what's going on with milfoil, which is good news in this town. And I think they've extended, as they always do, a, a, an invitation to the the board, as well as the police chief and fire chief to come on and participate.
There's actually a correspondent, yeah.
In their meeting, so that's on the 9th of July. You had information on fuel prices?
Oh, yeah.
Is that something that, yeah, is that something that we want to act on today?
If you've had a chance to look at it and you have some decisions, yes, absolutely.
So I've taken a look at it. It's, it's the one with all the highlighting on it.
Uh, no, I had the other with
Oh, that, that's not it?
Here it is, with Karen's recommendations.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, all right, yep, got it.
So the only question I had with respect to the fixed price contract at this point, and maybe you have a sense for this, Karen, is typically in signing a fixed price contract, there's sort of an optimal period in the year where you, you know, the prices get to a certain point, and you lock it in there. You wait too long and it's going up, you, you jump too early and it hasn't gone down as much as it might. Did you have any sense from the folks as to what, what the sense was there?
Well, everybody thought we'd benefit with fixed pricing rather than a float, I know that's not your question, but, but the person, gentleman from Carroll County Oil, said we are welcome to watch it if we like, but we'll lock in. But his assistant really didn't recommend that, she just didn't have a good feeling about the rise in prices in oil and things like that. Her thought was to get it done sooner than later because I'm afraid you're waiting and it will go up. Everybody's definitely very great with their professionalism about it, those companies that I mentioned, and they're just, they're to benefit us, I mean, they totally know our municipality, and they, you know what I mean, and they are offering advice, and it seems very genuine. So to answer your question, I guess if I had an inclination, I'd say now I'd run laser.
And my other question is the library does their thing separately, but would they have the opportunity to become part of this contract?
Good point, and I completely miss that, so let me, I just went on what we normally have based, but I don't see why they couldn't be as long as that's already there.
I think the last time we, when we switched from Wolfboro Oil, they decided to stay with Wolfboro Oil because of the service.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that might be the case again. But we'll give you the information, and you can bring it to the trustees.
Okay, great.
What companies were contacted?
Eastern, Carroll County Oil, and mine, and Irving.
And what are the fuels?
Diesel, propane, and oil. On and off road diesel.
Not gasoline?
No, I didn't go into gasoline, but I can if you'd like to, I'm not, not an area I'm super familiar with, but I can look into it.
And this would cover all departments and buildings except the library, which is to be negotiated in?
Because we have the fire department included in that.
There would be a little
Transfer station, yeah, yeah.
The road agent gets his fuel separate, correct?
He gets his from the state.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't recall that part of that.
The state has fuel.
Even the gasoline department?
Yes.
Even to run the gasoline that's used to run the small engines?
I didn't research gasoline at all, to be honest, but I can if that's something you'd like me to do.
And they deliver gas?
I have no idea, that'd be totally something I have to say.
I think the gasoline issue is, we can get, number one, at the state pumps, but also we're grandfather with our car, gas pumps. If we were to change vendors, they'd, they'd require us to build a new building. It's not unsafe where it is, but we are grandfathered. Your recommendation is that we lock in as soon as possible?
That's the feeling I have, yes. And as you can see, if we, versus what we paid last year for float on the propane, I mean, if we lock in now at today, you know, at the price offered, we literally save 48% of what we saved last year.
Yeah.
And we know it, and it wouldn't be the gain, you know? And then for oil, we can float if we want, but I don't see the reason to, because you think, if it literally you bought today at float price, which as we know, float means change, of course, if you take that and make pretend you bought all the gallons at that cost versus a fixed price they're offering us, you'd only save a thousand dollars, and we know that float's going to change. So I, but that's my opinion.
All right, I'm prepared to make a decision.
Okay.
You go ahead.
Okay. I would move that we initiate a fixed price contract with Carroll County for oil and with Eastern for propane.
And Carroll County, it would be diesel as well, correct?
And Carroll County. Well, yeah, it's, all right, there is, but there's no fixed price on the diesel.
Correct, that, that's a good point, excuse me, you're right.
And we are using Carroll County now for diesel price, so what we're looking to do is change what we're doing in two areas. A fixed price contract for Eastern for propane, and a fixed price contract with Carroll County Oil for heating oil.
I second that, and I have a question. What are the two prices we're locking in?
Carroll County Oil did call me Friday afternoon, I had a voicemail message this morning, he said it might change by a couple cents, but it's not going to, because, you know, every fluctuates something every time, you know, even whenever they offer us a contract price.
Yeah, the, what you got on here was a dollar eighty-three, right? And it may be slightly different than that because it's the day we lock in, correct?
Yeah.
The price on here for propane is a dollar nineteen.
And she will honor that.
I'm sorry?
And that will be honored at that price.
Right. Okay.
Sounds good to me, I'm ready to vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nice job, thank you.
You're welcome.
Nice to get to call you back.
And we agreed on the diesel for Carroll County.
Yes, we're gonna stay, stay with the existing arrangement on diesel, yeah.
All right, very good.
The milfoil control committee will be meeting at nine o'clock tomorrow morning. And in terms of an update on milfoil, I will tell you that the joint board's dash vote is in commission for the season and ready and available. And the last update that I had from Amy Smabula at the from the state is that she anticipates being out to do her spring milfoil survey this week, so. But reports that I've had from observers tend to suggest we're not going to have a lot to deal with this year.
Good news.
Absolutely. That's, that's all I have, updates today.
The, I think the town wide yard sale was successful, saw a lot of signs out.
Seventeen properties, yeah.
Yeah, well, I'll tell you, there were, there were a lot of people blocking 109 as I drove to Wolfboro on, on Saturday morning, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
I have nothing else on there, please.
Oh, forgot the minutes, thank you. I checked that off. Okay, review of the minutes for May 23rd. I had no corrections.
I'm all set.
I have no comment because I wasn't here.
Duly noted. Motion to approve as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good job, Karen.
Nice job.
Great job. That was easy. Switch through this. Okay, yes, we should set our meetings for the second half of the year. We do have a couple of elections, primary and oh, God. Presidential election.
Can that be a work product and do we decide it at the next meeting?
Sure. Draft it up.
So you can work on the meetings and
Here's the information on what Rick had mentioned about the changes in the penalties for active data properties. RPC, 48th Annual Meeting on June 27th. RSVP by June 17th, if anybody wants to go.
Zooming up, rolling.
Yes.
Okay, we're still waiting for CIP?
We are, we are looking, yes, we are, we are looking for new members for the CIP committee.
And the let's see, we have the chairman of the budget committee, the planning board should have an official vote on the chairman. 2016 Annual Safety Inspections are scheduled for Wednesday, June 15th, and Wednesday, June 22nd. The schedule, if anybody wants to know. They have, the committee has sent it to all the different people involved. Request to transplant the lilac bushes in front of the Dearborn House, I think that would be great, to bring it here to the fire station. Memo on the soft shoulder, Route 171, from Mark Howard.
That's up by Venus Grange Road?
Yeah, isn't too much work that can be done right now, but he told me the job should be done within a few weeks. Yeah, isn't too much work that can be done right now, but he told me the job should be done within a few weeks. They're just placing some gravel onto the soft shoulder and spread it.
I have a club.
To provide some firm ground. Yep.
Thank you.
Let ones permit. Wardleberry Island. There's email. Set through Council Candy Consent Calendar. Minutes. Conservation, okay. Conservation. Merrill Lake Watership. And Cemetery Trustees. Lower Beach Pond Dam. Let ones permit application. And here's the invitation to the Islanders' meeting. Tuftonboro Times. Deadline for articles, July 1st. Who's turn? Probably Bill's.
I'll be happy to do it.
That's all we got here. Just various emails from. They're here for reading pleasure, if anybody. Anything else? I did have, a call came in on Friday complaining about the Merrill Lake Boat Ramp. It's bumpy, somebody, somebody named Beth, we don't know who it is, she was complaining about it. Public input? Bob?
Have you made a decision on whether to use Rick for the auction of the properties? Or are you still considering what to do?
I would say that we are going to use him, yes, because we want to get the most amount of money for these properties.
Do you think that might be a conflict of interest where he's the town? Okay. I have another question, if you don't mind.
Okay.
I'll send you some written comments about the auction process also. Has there been any progress on the space needs of the library in this town? Last, I think last, you were going to get together with the Police Chief and maybe the.
We haven't met with Chief Shagari yet, we have to do that, so, and have to schedule that. Whatever the things we have to do when I get back from the pitch, and so. Okay, anybody else?
Different subject.
Okay.
I would volunteer for the CIP position. Put my name up there.
Motion to adjourn.
Double. Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Have a safe trip.